You ready? All right. Hi. Thank you for coming. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan operation and we really want you to learn from the candidates and about the issues that are important to you. So, welcome. I'm Carol Burr, I'm Vice President of the I want to thank the Enterprise Record, which you may have noticed is now really legitimately and very powerfully a county moderator. And also North State Public Radio, which is on the current network, the Camper. Everybody's all hands on deck and so we're very happy to have these two wonderful organizations represented here in town. Also, I'd like to thank our League of Women Voters forum team, my fellow moderator, Deborah Gordon, our question sorters, Jane Wander and Tony Lee. You may have noticed our greeter out there, Dave Bailey, who are at least also to have our runner. If you have your index cards, you have a question, just raise them up and she will come and get the agreement over to our question sorters. So that's what it means. It's a little bit tricky here because the center aisle doesn't go all the way back, but be persistent, we want the questions. So, and we have many with one split of their time, so we're really going to try and read this quickly. So we're going to have one minute open and one minute questions answered. So, after we're due, we'll go into my other cap, which is moderator cap. So, okay. All right. A little bit about the Board of Supervisors. Its service is a government body for the county of you. It exercises the legislative and administrative powers of the federal powers as well as the constitutional and statutes, the D. County Charter and the D. County Code. The D. County Board of Supervisors consists of five members, each of whom is elected from a district in which they reside. Each board member maintains an office within the district where she represents. The term of office shall be four years and the board will make a new chair and vice chair at the first meeting in January of each year in that just occurring.
Yes, it is.
My understanding is Steve Lampard is going to be chair.
Yes.
And Doug Teter is going to be vice chair.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're going to wait until we have conflict to come. That's the third district that's up for election this year. It will be at our speaking event on February 1st at Chulahaw. Okay. The ground rules. Each candidate will be given one minute for a written statement, one minute to respond to each question, and one minute to leave a closing statement. All candidates will have the opportunity to answer each question. The media, the lady, and the audience will present questions. We encourage members of the audience to use the card as available to submit a question. Please raise your hand if you like the card and when you have your question written down, you can pick it up. The question may be for both candidates and there's been a few questions about when they stop eating their lives, so it's important that the questions be really ones that they can answer and talk about the policies. Because our forums are nonpartisan, any demonstration support is definitely not to recover. A little bit at the end is when we close this first session, we'll have a chance to applaud our candidates and we'll have a short break and then we'll begin the forum for on business four. Okay. So, a little bit of them. First open statement, we'll give a little tone.
Can I get a minute?
You can.
I need like fifteen, I'm telling you, I really, all right. Really appreciate that you're having this forum and I appreciate all of you took time out of your lives. I know that politics must be important to you because here you are. I'm not here as an aspiring politician with dreams of grand or anything, I just want to make sure my local government's running a good way. I have fifteen years of experience and I'm very knowledgeable on all the issues facing the county. I've worked for over seventeen years on relicensing of the Orville Dam. This issue is dear to me. I feel like the dam came to our community of Orville in particular and left us in a state that we're still trying to correct. But my number one issue always in everything I do is public safety. I think that we're being impacted by a lot of state level laws that are allowing a lot of people to walk that probably shouldn't be, should be under close incarcerated or under probation. And I know we need a new jail and part of that would be fifteen beds for the mentally ill, the chronically mentally ill that go to jail and need treatment. I'm supported by the sheriff and I'm supported by the DA and law enforcement unions. I believe your supervisor serves as a cushion between you and government. I'm here to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Green.
Hello, thanks for having me. Thanks everyone for coming. My name's Ian Green. I was raised in this district. My family had dry cleaners down on High Street in Orville. I grew up going to ConCale in Berry Creek. Recently, while going out to the communities to see what it is that everyone finds important, I've come across PGME being the largest issue. I've noticed that it's acknowledged by our local government, but it's just dealt with with platitudes. I would like to offer a solution. I would like to put public utilities on the agenda. Both PGME and Cow Water need to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the first question will be from the Enterprise Record, Steve Shinnell.
Do we rotate? Do we rotate? He goes first?
Yes, you can go first with a question and then he'll go first with a second question.
Okay.
Talk about protecting our communities, football communities. Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. Well, talking about protecting our communities, particularly football communities, from fire. There currently is some debate whether the best way to do it is by setting out the forests or the best way to do it is by hardening structures so that they don't burn. The idea is, is it a vegetation management problem or is it a building combustion problem? Is the way it's been put. I'm interested in your views on that question.
Well, it's absolutely both. We had it, we need to change and update our building codes which we have, which don't allow for flammable siding, don't allow for embers to enter, and we need to really step up our enforcement at a hundred-foot clearance as a minimum. On a hill it should be more. But our forest management's been terrible for the last fifty years. We've allowed the forests to grow really thick and brushy. We haven't maintained that, we haven't been out there clearing the brush, allowing the trees to return. And you're going to see more oak woodlands instead of conifers in the lower levels because with climate change and warming environment we're in, that's, and they're more fire sustainable to have oak woodlands. So it's a combination of both. Both are being worked on. I'm pleased to say that even the governor, when he visited here, offered to put money into this and he has. We're putting it to work on a community level in a fire safe council, which most every one of my rural communities have a fire safe council now and it's very important.
Mr. Green.
I feel that both are important. I was up at the Berry Creek Fire Safe Meeting this past Saturday. The things that they were most concerned with, which I feel is what the board should be concerned with, are that their escape routes aren't safe. They want fuel reduction alongside the roads leading away from their communities. Most of them feel that, in Berry Creek at least, they feel that their place is the next place that's going to have a major fire and they're worried about getting out. Thank you.
From North State Public Radio.
The spillway crisis at the Orville Dam was nearly three years ago. There was an immediate acknowledgement that the county's ability to inform people of an emergency was entirely inadequate. What's the best method to reach people? And after three years, or almost three years, why isn't that in place?
Mr. Green, you'll be first.
I was just speaking last night on the phone with someone that was on the grand jury, or grand jury, sorry. One of the suggestions that was turned down, which I really liked, but I understand the reasoning, is the audible alarm system. Their reasoning is, I believe, is that they're on the electric grid, so if that goes down, they're, they don't work. I would like to see that we looked into though, because there's, there's alternatives to the electric grid. You can do a solar in the summer and have the batteries for the energy, something that came about. Thank you.
Mr. Connolly.
The sirens were just tested last week and there's three backups on the electrical because they have to have three backups to make the gates work. Also, because of the fiasco with spillway incident, which by the way was caused by poor design, poor workmanship, and poor maintenance by DWR, we're totally responsible for that. I'll get back on track. The sheriff has implemented a reverse 911 and we rely on mostly mobile phones on that. There's also evacuation routes now in place according to the amount of the emergency. In other words, if it was a spillway, breakage of the gates, that's different than a collapse of the emergency spillway or failure of the dam. So these are all put in, it's a policy by the sheriff as to what level we evacuate now. So there's been vast improvements on that.
Thank you. All right, we have a question from the audience and this will be, Mr. Connolly, for the first answer. In your opinion, what is the most important issue for Beed County?
It's always going to be public safety. We need to really work on our public safety. We need a new jail. We're releasing people every day that shouldn't be. We need more mental health beds at jail. Unfortunately, we're, we're, we're short of the money. We're working on it, the sheriff's working on it. The state has stepped up and given us some money. Behind that, of course, we want our houses safe, we want fire safety. We've increased the requirements for building in the Wui or Wathime interface area. We have a contract with Cal Fire, looks like we'll continue with them. They're going, they're going to step up. The governor, the governor, the governor and the government has given them additional money, so we're looking for more out of them. And nobody wants their family to be unsafe. It's always going to be my number one issue, keep your family safe.
Thank you. Mr. Green.
I agree with Mr. Connolly, public safety is very important. I would like to emphasize fire safety and fire prevention. Just, again, speaking with people, it's very important. The escape routes and whatnot, it's number one priority. PGME definitely fits in on that. It's stated that they're responsible for the fire. That should be included in public safety. If we take control of our power, we'll have the same issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's a question from the league and Mr. Green, you'll be the first to answer. Beed County water is perhaps our most valuable resource. What policies do you support to keep control and use of our water, both surface and ground, under control of Beed County residents?
First off, let's get Cow Water out here. Also, I'm not a scientist, but I was told recently that the basin for our groundwater is in Berry Creek, which means, it means Berry Creek needs to be protected. So it comes back to fire safety. To protect our groundwater, that's where our groundwater's coming from. Again, I'm not a scientist though.
You're not what?
A scientist.
Ah, okay. Yes. Beed County water is perhaps our most valuable resource. What policies do you support to keep control and use of our water, both surface and ground, under local control?
It's very dear to me. You know, when they built the dam, they stopped one of the most beautiful rivers in the nation from flowing and it was built to export water to Southern California. Thank God our local farmers, our number one industry, have first access to it. But I don't support any export of our groundwater in any manner whatsoever. There is some conjunctive use being offered up by the state. We have stigma coming in where we have to make sure we have a sustainable source of groundwater throughout our county. I think that's a good thing, but I think it's going to backfire on the rest of the state. Think they want us to prove we have this abundant amount of groundwater so they can get more of our surface water rights. I am not for that at all. I think transferring our water rights among the people that own it, the farmers and the government, within our county is a good thing for our future. But export of our water is a bad thing. We're subsidizing a desert as it is and it's on our backs. They've never settled with us on the dam or anything else they promised us.
Okay, we'll have another question from the media. Enterprise Record.
The Beed Regional Conservation Plan, it's been worked on by BK Associating Governments since 2008, I believe. The idea is basically you take the cumulative environmental impacts of the general plans of the county and all the cities on the valley floor and address those impacts in a comprehensive way. I'm curious what you guys' opinion of that is.
Mr. Connolly, you go first.
Yeah, well, it's a great idea. It's really hard to get around. To give you a little background, what it means is we go out to find out where the species are, what it takes to protect the habitat. And then, in this plan, if a developer or the government's doing a project, they just write a check for the, to offset the impacts of those species. Right now, it's willy-nilly. They go out, they determine what it is, they got to go find out where to do this, and then there's like three payments instead of one. But it's very much resisted by the farming community. I think we're still working on that. I understand they don't want to layer another layer of government, but really, the Dangerous Species Act was acted by more conservative presidents than you would think, and it's not going away. So we need this HCP to streamline things. It would save twenty million dollars on Highway 70 only. Alone, it would save two years of work. But we're working with the farmers, we're going to have to come to a compromise, we may have to pull a species or two out, but we got to get this done.
Thank you. Mr. Green.
I'm not familiar with this at all. I feel that interior development needs to be done with the environment in mind, but other than that, I'd have to read up on this.
North State Public Radio.
There's currently big disputes between bondholders and shareholders over the future of Pacific Gas and Electric Company and its reorganization. There's also a push, pressure by the mayor of San Jose, and you'll forgive me, I forget his name, to have the state of California take over Pacific Gas and Electric Corporation. Is that something that you think is a good idea or not? And be supportive? And if so, why? If not, why not?
Mr. Green.
I think it's absolutely a good idea as long as it's controlled locally, not as a state entity. Our county and our districts would have to have a huge say in what happens. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Connolly.
PGME put corporate profit above public safety and maintenance of their equipment. They're definitely the cause of these fires. They can blame it on climate change, they can blame it on wind, it was their lack of maintenance under there. They need more oversight. The PUC is corrupt, it doesn't hold them in check and will use local electives to sue them. I urge anybody who's impacted to sue them. I've got a bad word for them. And now, that is not your local employee, that is not our neighbors, that's not the people that are doing the work. They put corporate greed over our safety and I'm angry with them. And I think that we, we're going to keep pounding on this, we're going to keep doing it. They're slippery though. They've got so much power, they're slippery. Anything that takes them completely over might be worse, so we got to be careful about the San Jose guys thing. But we're, we're watching closely and I urge anyone who's impacted to get aware and sue those people.
Mr. Connolly, what should happen? I mean, should shareholders prevail, the bondholders prevail, or would the state take it over?
It's okay to have a corporation in America, but it's got to be run in a way that protects the safety of the people you're serving. They've had gas lines break for the same reason. They can't put their corporate profit over the maintenance. This is a maintenance problem. These towers are fifty to seventy-five years old. They're rusty. You can look at them right now, they're rusty. They broke because they failed. They didn't fail because of the wind that day.
What's the solution?
And they need to be held accountable and put our public safety and their service above their profit. There's got to be more control. The CPU gives them a rubber stamp each and every time. That's wrong.
So you're, you feel this, the Conference in Public Utilities Commission is inadequate regulator and not strong enough?
Absolutely. I don't know how stronger I can say that.
So what should happen to that entity?
It needs to be looked at by the legislature and the governor and reorganized to where it does its job, not in bed with the utilities it's supposed to be taking care of.
So you're essentially keeping the system the way it is, but with stronger oversight, not throwing it out?
And I'm open to a takeover if it gives me that to protecting my people. Thank you.
Mr. Green, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No.
Okay. This is from the audience. How do you propose to keep outside interests from interfering with the redevelopment of Paradise? We'll start with Mr. Connolly.
I believe that Paradise is a township, continues to exist. We, as a county, should be there to help and give them a lift, a lift up, but not interfere too much. I think that they, they're going to have to go to the current building standards with a few exceptions, which our legislators have given them, like they don't have to put solar on because their insurance didn't cover it and so forth. But they're going to have to go back with, without the interference of people that weren't elected by the locals to regulate them. There's a, there's a, there's always a compromise and when you, in democracy, the people closest should be regulating them, not somebody from another town or another county or another part of the state. We've already regulated them on that, but what we're going to require them, how we're going to require them to rebuild. It's going to be a tough one for Paradise because that place grew over a hundred and fifty years. It wasn't a big subdivision laid out in grids, it was laid out piece by piece and some places may not, with local support, not be rebuilt. It'll be in a dangerous place.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Okay. How do you propose to keep outside interests from interfering with the redevelopment of Paradise?
I don't think we're going to stop them from interfering, but I would like to, this is county-wide, not just Paradise, but Paradise specifically because they have the most rebuilding to be done. I feel that any redevelopments should be incentivized if they are either living wage jobs or affordable housing or environmentally forward-thinking.
Thank you. Here's a question from the audience. How will the hundred-foot clean area that you were talking about around dwellings be policed? Will there be fines? How will that be handled? And then we'll start with Mr. Green.
I feel really honestly that it should be an ordinance violation thing, just like any other ordinance violation. If they fail to comply, they get fined and it'll eventually turn into a lien.
Okay. Mr. Connolly.
That's a tough one because the major problem I run into is one neighbor clears these hundred feet as much as he can and the neighbor is adjacent and he can't get on their land. So we're trying to figure a balance here where a good neighbor policy or something. And yeah, eventually it should be a fine. I mean, especially if your neighbor could cause you to burn down because they're not maintaining their own. Right now, it's not strong enough and we're working on that, but there's a delicate balance. One of the proposals was every individual would have to clear twenty feet along any road adjacent to their property, through their property, on either side. I don't know that everybody could do that, especially at three or four hundred acres. So we're, we're coming back with another workshop at the Board of Supervisors. The last meeting this was brought up. And there's not a simple answer, but I do stand for, please, let's make it so we can enforce against people who are bad neighbors that could cause you to burn out because they didn't do their job and that could include fines in the future.
Thank you. Here's a question from the audience. How can Beed County partner with cities within the county as well as contiguous counties to expand economic development? And we'll start with Mr. Connolly.
I think we start to do that more and more. For example, we reached out to Uba County, tell them that they can't afford to do the Highway 70 corridor, we'll bring them some money. We have multiple, like the chambers of commerce are getting more regional. We hooked up with the Shasta Chamber of Commerce so that it's not just Beed County's. And I, I think we always can work together. Always be a little friction between cities and counties. The county provides a lot of services for the cities, but the, but the cities have their own autonomy. But as far as recreation, I'd like to see San Joaquin train up to Orville every, every couple, twice a day would be good. We need a good robust bus service down to Sacramento so we can attract more people up here. And getting Highway 70 then will help our overall economy and help our cities and the county in general.
Thank you. Mr. Green.
I feel that the city and county can work together to bring revenue in by, like I said in the last question earlier, providing incentive for living wage industry to move to the area. I was told in the meeting last night that they don't like to do tax breaks. Well, the, the city of Orville doesn't like to do tax breaks because that's where the money for sidewalks and roads comes from and that's what they're asking at this meeting, what they're asking for at this meeting. But I believe if we bring industry in, it can be unionized and whatnot, we may lose a little bit of tax money from that business, but people making a living wage are more likely to own homes, so they'll be paying taxes on those. It's not an issue of missing out on roads or sidewalks.
Thank you. Another question from the audience. Do you think incorporating private solutions, businesses and churches and regulation modifications would help address the homeless situation in our area? Do you think incorporating private solutions and regulation modifications would help address the homeless situation?
Is this?
Yes, we will. Mr. Green, you get to answer this first if it makes any sense to you.
No.
Moving right along. Okay. Let me see here, I can't even read this one. By 2030, the senior population is projected to double in the state of California. What is Beed County doing to enhance state programs like housing support to help prepare for the impending crisis? Bill? I mean, sorry, Mr. Connolly, you're first.
I am.
Is it, is it his turn? Okay. I, I believe you.
Sure, it's my turn.
Do you want me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. By 2030, the senior population is to be, is projected to double in the state of California. What is Beed County doing to enhance these state programs to help prepare for the impending crisis?
I'm not quite sure what Beed County is doing, but I have one major suggestion. Being the former vice chair of DDW, we've been trying to get a new contract for in-home support services for seven years that directly affects the aging crisis that we're talking about. There's more people that need to be taken care of than there are care providers and the only way to entice more people to become care providers is to give them a raise and better benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Connolly.
Well, first off, we're encouraging low-income senior housing. There's an example in Orville, it was very supportive when they came to town, turned out really well. Behind that, there's a huge expansion of the, both the major hospitals, Orville and Enlow are expanding because they know this is coming and seniors take a lot more medical care. And in-home health and care providers will definitely be part of the solution because many people will need, need them. But the negotiation for their contract is underway and I can't really speak about it. There, I think there'll be a breakthrough there for them. And keep in mind that they are getting a dollar an hour raise as minimum wage goes up, which is about forty-two percent raise, so that should entice some people to be interested as minimum wage goes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Let me ask a question about homeless, since that other one didn't quite go over. It's, the homeless population tends to be focused or gathered in the cities, I understand that. But mental health is a key issue for a number of those people and the county is the one that gets the mental health funding from the state. I'm curious, what your opinion is of how the county is contributing to, or contributed to, is assisting with the homeless situation and if it could do more?
Well, the county could definitely do more. We're trying to obtain beds for the chronically mentally ill. If they can't take, they're homeless and they can't take care of themselves, they need to be institutionalized where they get some meals, get some treatment and get the right type of drugs. That's going to take a change in the way we look at things. That's going to take a change in the way we look at things. We recently adopted Laura's Law or vowed to, and that will help with that where the judge can order them to medicate. I think the homeless situation is going to be 60 to 80% mentally ill or people addicted to drugs or both. And you're going, we're just going to have to as a society accept there's a cost to helping these people and get there. Now, some people fall through the cracks, very empathetic, they lose their job, they get hurt and they can't go to work. We need to look for housing. How we develop that tiny housing or whatever is underway. It's definitely on all our minds. You can't send your grandkid into the library because there's so many people there that are homeless. It's something we need to address.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
I'd like to see more outreach done by the county. It seems that a lot of the people's issues that they're fighting out about the homeless people's issues by them getting arrested. We need to send people out and get to know them so we can skip the whole jail party. I don't know if there can be a county agency for that, I'm not quite familiar with the funding. But being more proactive about it instead of using our police to deal with homeless issues, we can hit in front of it before it's an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take a look.
Just following up on the mental health issues, what should the county be doing? I know it has very limited funds, you know, the county's never, has extra money to float around for priorities and I know it's always an attempt to do more with less, but what could and should the county be doing directly in terms of mental health because it appears that there are more and more numerous people having episodes on our streets and of course on social media, people are very concerned.
Mr. Green?
I'd like to refer back to my last answer, but also really behavioral health is one of the major issues for homelessness. I took, I looked at the county budget a few times, it's over 400 pages. I really like Open Gov though, it's a good way to see what's, how the money's being spent. A big chunk of it's being spent on behavioral health and human services. Just maybe realigning some of the money toward, again, public outreach. And a lot of these issues that I'm concerned with, the county's concerned with, should be, have to be dealt with by state and federal agencies as well. What the county can do is a Band-Aid for the problems that are in front of us. State and federal, like we need more behavioral health, like mental health facilities, we need more housing.
Thank you. Mr. Connolly?
Well, first off to address it, the good news is the state is bringing some more money to us. We do have teams that are out on the street, meeting with the homeless and trying to understand them better so to educate Mr. Green. We are doing police training, it's been implemented in Chico where they're being taught how to approach mentally ill people, particularly the homeless, and I think that should go maybe county-wide in the future. There's, it's, for some reason, it seems to be expanding and it's very hard to hire clinical psychologists. I mean, they're very expensive and they're hard to find. We're working on that, we're trying to use modern technology in peer counseling where somebody that's been through the system can approach a mentally ill person or mentor them and we're even paying some of those people. So it is a little brighter than it was, but it's still a big problem, societal problem in the area.
Thank you. Here's a question from the audience. Jails were originally created for rehabilitation, but have transformed into a business. Instead of using taxpayer money for building more jails, how can we rehabilitate instead of incarcerate?
So actually, under the new system, you know, AV 109 and so forth, there is some more rehabilitation, but they, what they did is they thrust their overpopulation in the state prisons onto the county, so now we're a prison without, we never kept people this long, now if you're five years under, so that, I'm not speaking for the sheriff, but I heard him say, "We want more educational and mentoring systems in the jail, but we need to expand it. We're overpopulated, there's not a lot of room to be teaching people a trade or educating on that." When you turn a county jail that was used to keeping people for a year or so into a five-year prison for some of these people, that has to come with the expansion of the jail. We simply don't have the room or the resources without expanding that jail. We need the bed space, it needs to be modernized. If you tour, especially the women's section's terrible. And I agree, it's not rehabilitating and educating to the level it could, and I think that will happen with the expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Repeat the question, please.
Jails were originally created for rehabilitation, but have transformed into a business. Instead of using taxpayer money for building more facilities, how can we rehabilitate instead of incarcerate?
Rehabilitate instead of incarcerate. Obviously, drug counseling is a major issue. I would rather see it be stopped before it starts or one of the lowest income counties in the state. A lot of people, if you look at low-income areas, there is a lot of crime. If we bring more living wage jobs into this area, I believe that the crime will go away. Not completely, but it'll get better. Thank you.
Thank you. A question from the audience, another question. What role does Buick County need to play in addressing the housing crisis? And we'll start with you, Mr. Green.
The housing crisis. My particular interest is affordable housing because again, we're one of the lowest incomes in the state, so that goes back to incentives. So any type of incentives for affordable housing.
Incentive from the state?
Or the county.
Or the county. Mr. Connolly?
I think the housing crisis is made up by overregulation. The government's regulated to the point that even here in Buick County, it's about $30,000 to start to build a house and haven't turned a piece of dirt and we need relief on that. They've also over-engineered our houses. I come from a contracting background and in 15 years I've been in an office, they've probably added a half a ton of unnecessary metal inside of a house. So California's created most of this by overregulation, over-designing, over-requiring, CEQA, all this stuff they do just to build your own house, it's crazy. And I don't think that you can low-income yourself to prosperity. I mean, my community has plenty of low-income housing, we need to have some people move up here. Our doctors, lawyers and our teachers don't even live in a community, so my district needs more moderate and higher end, along with some moderate and low-income. We're out of, we're out of balance. It's a true statement that District 1 imports its teachers, doctors and lawyers every day.
Thank you. This question from Mr. Connolly. First, many county residents are finding it difficult to get a primary care doctor. What steps could the county take to attract physicians and other medical personnel?
First off, I don't think the county can do that. It's going to be a, the new system is the hospital sets up a doctor and I suffer from that. My family doctor retired and I've never been able to keep one. I go to the hospital, they assign me one, I'm looking for one, if you know a good one, send me their name and number. I mean, you know. And that's not the county's job, that's going to be to your medical profession. And again, one of the things they lack is adequate housing. A doctor doesn't want to live, but in a really nice neighborhood. They did all that education, they got the money, we need to build a place for them to live. That's one of the biggest complaints. There's a bus runs from Orville every day to Rockland and picks up doctors and nurses and transports them to the Orville Medical Center because they can't find a place to house themselves. So we need that kind of housing stock and we need to get out of people's way so they can build one.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
If Mr. Connolly doesn't think that the county can do much to...
Then you don't either?
Yeah.
That's a short answer, okay?
Well, yeah, I have a lot more experience than I do in this.
Mr. Shaw?
Mayor Wintecros, the county regulates them right now by limiding the size that they can be, depending on the acreage of the property. And then the measure is enforced by fines if the rules are broken and if the fines aren't paid, then liens are imposed upon the property. I'm curious what your guys' opinion of that system is.
Mr. Green?
I wouldn't measure it as wealth-based, I don't agree with that. Also, I'll explain myself, the more land that you have, the more that you can grow and I don't, I'm not on board with that. The upside to it is that it's a complaint-driven ordinance issue and I do agree with that. I feel that we're missing out on possible revenue by not allowing commercial cannabis grows. There are, there's always been grows up in our rural areas. I feel that they should be allowed to legitimize instead of being on the unregulated market. I believe that Buick County can get money out of it, so why is it not on the table? Thank you.
The marijuana regulations we have come about over several years. We got as lenient as 99 plants if you had enough acreage and it was gradual. It was abused by people that lived here, people from out of the area. It degraded our forests, they illegally did everything you think of applying chemicals, grading, all this stuff. So we came back and we passed a pretty reasonable law. You can have six recreational, 150 feet of medical. And if you're on a smaller lot, you got to be indoors. And it's working because what Mr. Green did point out is where people are growing and they all get along, they don't turn each other in, right? And I can live with that. My home volume was three or four calls a day from September to October, it's like one a week now. So what we're doing is working and by the way, anybody can get cannabis in the county, we allow in-home delivery and I think one of the cities will probably put a dispensary in sooner or later.
Thank you. Mark?
After this spillway crisis, there were various reports that came out and while the state has, the DWR has replaced the spillway and the emergency spillway, there were issues raised about concerns with the spillway gates. The DWR has done their own examination. I'm curious Supervisor Connolly, where you fall on this, whether you believe that the spillway gate's structure is in imminent need of replacement or if, you know, the engineers who say that it's potentially a hazard are willing to spend unlimited sums of the public's money in order to create, you know, an unattainable standard of safety.
Well, that's an excellent question. The same people that built the spillway built the gates. They're 50, over 50 years old and there's no way to really examine the metal parts and to see where they're at because they didn't think of a redundancy, a way to hold the lake back, well, they did it. So as we go to these meetings, they keep trying to tell us, "Yeah, it's okay." And I'm going, "How do you know it's okay?" "Well, because I saw pictures when they're building it and it looked okay." But they really don't have a way to give me forensic evidence that it's truly okay and I'm working with a group, including a couple professors out of Berkeley and we've wrote an intervention, our group has wrote an intervention outside of the county to fur, saying that we want this looked at. There should be a forensic examination, not by former DWR employees or current employees, of the entire facility. It's run down, it wasn't maintained, right? They can't keep six generators going, they need to step up and we need to be allowed to do that.
Supervisor Connolly, I mean, sorry, a little feedback.
I don't think it immediately is going to collapse or anything like that, but I don't trust them. They've never core-drilled it, they've never taken one apart, they've never done anything like that. There will be a failure of the gates eventually. I can't predict when, but it'll eventually happen. And then they have no redundancy to stop the water to fix it. Well, as a county supervisor, what would be...
Let's hear from Mr. Green and then you can do a follow-up. Mr. Green?
The person, if I were to have this question myself, that I would ask, it would be Mr. Connolly. You can look back at our messenger history and it's questions about the dam and the lake. I'm not an expert on this at all.
So follow-up.
A follow-up, it's just, you know, it's been almost three years. Where's the pressure, you know, do you, you know, are you winning? Do you have a commitment for them to replace that? Or is it, you know, are they stringing you along?
Well, they have their experts saying that they have a risk analysis and they put it into how many years and frankly, the biggest risk is failure above the powerhouse and they say it's one in 30,000 years because we won't have a larger earthquake. So, you know, I'm there to represent the public and I'm saying, hey, one in 30,000 years might be a year from now, so to me, that's not adequate. Under current dam standards, Orville would fail. It doesn't have a low-level outlet, it doesn't have the redundancy in place to do the maintenance. And I could go on and on, we can do a whole thing on that if you want.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr. Connolly? All right, here's a question from the league. What can Buick County do to prevent global warming or ameliorate the consequences of climate change? And I believe, Mr. Green, you start.
I just had a private meeting with some of the people that are involved in the restoration of Paradise, the permacultural folks. They told me a lot of stuff, it was about two hours long and it's nothing that I can really boil down in two minutes. I would have to speak with them for weeks at a time. Really, if I were elected, those are the people that I would go to.
My turn. We're trying to move people to our buses and encourage them not to drive their vehicles. That's part of the state's plan and when, as we plan for our transportation, that's always part of it. We're trying to get more rooftop solar, we encourage it, it's easy to get a permit. Now, not for everybody, I know there's somebody probably out here mad about that statement, but most people get a permit for solar. You know, there's a big argument what causes climate change, it's real. The other thing we got to worry about is these huge inundations we receive and how we plan in the future as to where we're going to put all this water. And so we're having to be very conscious of improving our drainage along our roadways and any new subdivisions we put in, we are suffering with some problems currently with that. And also, it's a huge impact on the operation of the dam. As a county, I'm very interested that they change the operations because of warm rain on snow.
Mr. Green? Did you have anything to add? Okay. Question from the audience. What is your opinion of the needle exchange program? Is this mandated by the state or can the county change the program? And I think we start with you, Mr. Green? I'm not sure now. We start with you.
Yeah, what was I, I'm up?
Mr. Connolly, I think, never mind.
Where do I get them?
I'm listening, my way here, yeah.
I got really mixed feelings. I think because it's state mandated, it's sometimes put in very inappropriate areas, but I do know that the statistics show that it will prevent disease. I just think it should be state mandated, it should be left up to the local health department to bring it to the board and we could decide, and the cities could decide where. It's definitely being done in appropriate areas and I'm not sure disposal, it should be required if you're going to put it out there. So I have very mixed feelings about it. I think it's preventing disease, it's helping us in other ways, which are health costs to us at the county level, but it's inappropriate for the state to tell us where to do it and not have our input so we could do it in a logical manner. And there should be a huge exchange part of it because I understand they're starting to accumulate, you can't keep one unless you put one in or something. That's my opinion, I'm not up on it really.
Thank you.
I feel if it's state mandated, then it's state mandated, there's nothing that we can really do about it. If it were turned back somehow, it should be up to each municipality. There's a lot of conversation about it, a lot of people feel very strongly about it. It shouldn't be a county thing, it should be each city.
Okay. Thank you very much. Would you gentlemen like to ask one more question? Otherwise, we'll go to closing statements.
I got another one.
You have another one?
Sure.
Go for it.
I'm interested in your opinions of the proposed entertie between the Paradise Irrigation District and Cal Water in Chico that would deliver the water that PID is not using in Paradise right now down to Chico theoretically to reduce the stress on the groundwater since all of Chico's water comes from wells.
Mr. Green?
I'm for the Cal, but I would like to see it under public control. Not Cal Water.
I think the study was warranted. It was a local decision to do it. But I do have mixed feelings. I'm very protective of water. I'm not a lover of Cal Water. Thanks for punching it a few times, Mr. Green. But, you know, I think the study is warranted, but it needs to come to Lafco. Local Area Formation Commission forms districts, dissolves districts, combines districts. And there should be a neutral scientific look at this. And I'm on Lafco, and I'm inclined to think if you're putting treated water into a community, that's probably your district then. So, I'd like to see what the study says, and I think they're gonna do it. And then if it's feasible, they need to bring it to Lafco if that's the, and we can just do a neutral look at it and see how we can work it.
Got it. The study was projected because it was a change to the budget, and it required a four-fifths vote. If it was put into the budget, the new budget, would it require a four-fifths vote?
I don't believe so, but I don't know that it'll go there. I think they're gonna have it done by then.
Just PID and Cal Water do it?
Yeah, I mean, it's their business. And, you know, there was talk, can I follow that? There was talk that county water would be put into that pipe and all this. But, you know, that's real speculation, just because as a policy, we've always stated that we wanna eventually keep our twenty-seven thousand five hundred acre foot allocation within the county in the future. Right now, we lease it out of county because otherwise it was just running out to the bay. And so, that was pure speculation by people. I don't know how they got there, other than they put, you know, past comments in general, we wanna keep it in the county, that we were somehow gonna put it in the pipe and ship county water there. Not true, in my opinion.
Mr. Green? Do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Mr. Albert, would you like to ask a final question?
Sure, yeah. Final question, Supervisor Connelly, in your years in office here on the board, what would you say is your biggest regret, or what would you say is the biggest missed opportunity or wrong direction that the board has taken on some issue?
My biggest regret is I had opportunity to get legislation to combine the sewer districts in Orville or make a huge attempt at it. There's three sewer districts, makes no sense, terminate in a fourth place. I know it angers some people, but we should look to the service of the public, not look to our individual little fiefdoms. And having four, actually four score, low put, TID, and the city of Orville have sewer service, just didn't make sense. And I regret that I didn't act on it. I was actually told that I better not, but Dan Loeb was the guy, he was kind of a wild man in the assembly. He was gonna do a bill, which would've got me to Oz with Lafco, but I think the conclusion of Lafco, that would make the most sense. I do regret that I didn't do it.
And Mr. Green, obviously, you've been following the board, you know, because you're a candidate for it. What do you think the board has done wrong over the past few years that you've been paying attention to?
Something that's been weighing heavily on my mind was after a trip to Concow, speaking with some folks up there. Everyone is upset, and I'm upset, that the people that were affected by the fire, they lost their houses, and they're being asked to pay for camping permits on their own land, land that they pay taxes for. They have to pay that much. It's not a whole lot, but these people don't have that type of money. It's like two hundred dollars or something. I feel that's out of bounds. It's morally reprehensible.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna have two minutes for a closing statement. We're really getting very roomy here. Instead of one minute, you get two. Mr. Green?
I don't have two minutes worth of stuff to say. I pretty much, I think everyone knows what my main stance is. I said it before, we're one of the poorest counties in the state. Why are we paying some of the highest prices for utilities? Why is our money for the things that we need to live going to executive bonuses and stock bonuses, dividends, whatever you wanna call them? We have the ability to take over our utilities. I think we should do it. I think everyone can get behind lower electric bills and water bills. Vote for me, and I promise that I'll make sure that it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Well, I just wanna tell everybody, thank you again for being here. I have really deep roots in the community. My family, my maternal side moved here in about nineteen fifteen. I was at a paper, so that's where I picked that up. I have a family. My wife's here, she see, I have two boys. One's Adam, forty, Casey, thirty-one. I got two grandkids, Austin and Kayla Rose. And so, I've really, really committed to this community, and as proved by ten years of American Legion baseball management. I did the Rotary Golf Committee. I did disc golf down in the park of Coach Little League. I mastered the Masonic Lodge. I'm soon gonna be the head of Rotary again. And I'm involved with the Chamber, Eagles, Moose, whatever. My commitment is to be the representative, stands between you and government, tries to keep government checked, and mostly keep you safe. So, I really humbly ask that you vote for me in the next election. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Now, you may applaud our candidates for coming in. Okay, we're gonna take a short break and get the district four candidates up here, so don't go too far. The restrooms are up and to the right or left, depending on which way you're facing.
Glad you all like to talk to each other. So, the forum is the same as what we did in the first forum. They'll have a minute for an opening statement and a minute to ask questions. And we are allowing our questioners to do a follow-up if they don't feel they've gotten a complete answer. Use those cards. If you have questions that weren't covered in the last, and we may use some of the same questions since we're all in the same county, but we do wanna get as many questions from the audience as possible. Just hold up your hand, and someone will come and pick up that card. So, as before, we'll just save our applause and our, you know, our whatever expressions till the very end when we thank our community-minded people for running for office. We know this is not easy work. And again, we appreciate our media representatives and our forum teams. So, without further ado, we will begin.
So, Mr. Shunover, are you ready to ask a question of these candidates? We will begin after we have the opening statement. She'll be the first one up. So, okay, Mr. Kimmel Schuh, do you have one minute for opening?
I'm first. Can everybody hear me okay? I've got a pretty loud voice, so, and also, I just wanna say I've had a cold, so bear with me. Good evening. I wanna thank the League Women Voters for putting this great event on. I appreciate that very much, and I wanna thank the crowd. I think this is a marvelous crowd. I wasn't expecting this many people, so thanks for coming out. Again, my name's Todd Kimmel Schuh. I grew up on a small family farm in Durham. I have three brothers, one sister. I live in the house that I grew up in. Have two sons. My wife is here tonight of thirty-four years. When I was growing up, my parents had four things that they used to impress upon us, four values: faith in God, family, hard work, and community service. So, we've all taken community service very seriously. I've led many different community organizations in the county, including the Buick County Farm Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary, the Northern California Regional Land Trust, the Chico State University Foundation, the Buick County Water Commission, where I am vice chair. And what I wanted to say, the reason I wanted to say that is because I believe being a local elected leader is all about community service, and that's why I'm running for office. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Hildebrand?
Can you hear me? All right, so I'm Sue Hildebrand, and I'm running for Buick County Board of Supervisors because I possess the skills and the experience that Buick County needs right now. Before the campfire, Buick County has been struggling with widespread poverty for a long time, and the county has generally been responding from crisis to crisis. And with the campfire, our county services have been overwhelmed. So, what I bring to this situation is that I'm a political scientist. I have a background in public policy, and I have been doing long-term strategic planning with community groups and government agencies for a very long time. Buick County needs to shift its focus from responding from crisis to crisis and become more proactive with a strategic plan so that we can predict and prevent future crises.
Thank you. Our first question will come from the Enterprise Record.
There are two very different communities in Buick County. There is Chico, and then there's everything outside of Chico. That's evidenced by the last election when Chico voted for Newsome for governor by about a sixty percent margin, and Reston County voted for Cox Reopenner by about a sixty percent margin. The unincorporated area in the Reston County went for LaMalfa, Chico went for Danny. There is a concern that we have heard from people in the unincorporated area that their Board of Supervisors, the five people, if there are three Chicoans on that board, their interests might be lost. And I know, Mr. Kimmel Schuh, you live in Durham, but you lived in Chico for a long time, and you worked in Chico for a long time. And Mr. Lambert pointedly did not endorse you because he thought you were too Chico-centric. So, you don't get off the hook on this one.
Am I first?
You're first.
Yeah, you know, the fourth district is an extremely diverse, and Sue would agree with this, I think, extremely diverse district. We've got parts of Chico. We've got small communities like Biggs, Gridley, Durham, and Thermalito as well. My pledge to those in the unincorporated area is that my office, should I be elected, will be in the city of Gridley. There's a county office there, and I believe they have office space, so that's where I will be. My heart is definitely in the rural area in regards to agriculture, but the people of Chico should not be ignored also. This is a very interesting district, and it's gonna take a lot of work on whoever is elected on our behalf to get this thing done right. And I think we need to make We need to be using every means to get people inside of housing because the housing-first model... I just read a statistic earlier today that said 85% of folks that are homeless using the housing-first model become actually successful. They get out, and they get out of the elements, and they have the opportunity to get the services that they need. That's one part of it. That's the immediacy. The second part of it is, I'm a real supporter of the Butte Regional Conservation Plan. Because what it does is it streamlines development. It allows us to grow quickly, but it also takes into consideration the conservation value that we really demand here in Butte County. We don't want to lose the very thing that makes this place so wonderful to live in.
Thank you. Mr. Kimmel Schu?
Okay. That was a tough question. It kind of wound around. But here's my answer. AB 430, I'm a supporter of AB 430. And the reason I'm a supporter of AB 430 is because I think we morally and ethically owe it to the folks who were burned out in the campfire to make it as easy as possible, within reason, to build a new home for them. Or even for cities like Biggs and Gridley who have been waiting for an opportunity to have more housing, as long as it's in the incorporated areas of their city. I think it's an opportunity for them to get some economic benefit out of a very, very bad tragedy that happened.
Thank you. A question from the audience. We'll start with Mr. Kimmel Schu. Protecting our water. How do candidates propose to protect our most precious resource from contamination and from out-of-area control boards?
Well, let me give you a little history lesson on water in Butte County. First of all, groundwater cannot leave Butte County without the support or approval of the Board of Supervisors. Back in 1996, and I'll try to make this fast. There was a group of people got together, actually led by my brother Mark, to make sure that we had an ordinance that was put on the ballot. It was a measure to make sure that that water never leaves Butte County. And we did that. We passed that. And so, we are protecting our groundwater in a big way. We have for 24 years. And the only way that that water can leave Butte County is by, groundwater can leave Butte County is by a vote of the public, not, excuse me, a vote of the Board of Supervisors. And as a Board of Supervisor, I will not vote to have groundwater leave Butte County.
Thank you. Ms. Hildebrand.
So, my concern with the groundwater, the protection of our groundwater is the... What's happening right now is while our community really is in a lot of chaos. I think we are a county still suffering from a lot of trauma. While we are unorganized, we are ripe for exploitation from forces that are a lot more organized than we are on the ground. So one of my biggest concerns is, there is down in LA, there is a legal precedent that says whoever fills the aquifer owns the aquifer. My concern is, even if it's within the county, whoever gets control of our water, right? Whether it's, well, we'll leave it at there. Whoever gets control of the water, any extra water that wants to store it in the aquifer, then owns the aquifer. And depending on who that entity is that fills the aquifer, it might not be public. So what I will never agree to, unless all my questions are answered, I will never agree to private ownership of water that goes into our aquifer.
Thank you. Another question from the audience. Now more than ever, Butte County needs help from the state of California to help us recover from the campfire. What statewide relationships do you bring to the table as county supervisor? How will you work with Nielsen and Gallagher? We'll start with you, Ms. Hildebrand.
Which statewide relationships do I bring?
Sort of, it sounds like, how are you going to be working with Nielsen and Gallagher since we need state support to do what we want to do in the county?
That's a funny question. Well, let's see. Let's try this. Let's start this way. Is all of my money comes from within the county, so I am not beholden to anybody except for the people here in Butte County. I am a firm believer that we need to collaborate across all of the county. We need to work city to county. We need to be working together. We need to be working with other counties to help campfire victims and to get the services that we need countywide. And I am a big proponent of collaborating with the state. I used to work, when I lived in Arizona before I moved to California, I worked at the state level. And my job was to give money to county and city, and cities, city governments in order to preserve open space. I understand what is required from government to government to work together. And as I mentioned, I am a very big proponent of collaboration.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kimmel Schu?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Yeah. See if I understand it myself. Okay. Now more than ever, Butte County needs help from the state of California to help us recover. What statewide relationships do you bring to the table as county supervisor? How will you work with Nielsen and Gallagher?
Yeah, well, first of all, Senator Nielsen and Assemblyman Gallagher have endorsed my candidacy. So I have a great relationship with them, and I feel very comfortable talking to them about issues in Sacramento. In addition, I have a great relationship with the California Farm Bureau and what they do at the state level. So that's a relationship. In addition to that, my son has worked in the legislature, and he has introduced me and has great relationships down there with many of the legislators in Sacramento. So I feel that I bring that to the table. I bring relationships to the table. And honestly, I plan to spend, if elected, considerable amount of time in Sacramento because I will be a full-time county supervisor, and meeting with people, meeting with agencies, seeing what relationships I can make in that area. And they certainly know Butte County now, and they certainly know that we need help. And so I think that this is our chance, and to make relationships is very important because I believe much of the success in politics is about relationships. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll start with Mr. Kimmel Schu for this question. Do you support the breakup in public ownership of PG&E, why or why not?
Well, you know, PG&E failed us, and they failed us in a big way. It's really unfortunate that they let their infrastructure fail. It's just a terrible thing. And a large corporation like that should be held accountable. And they are being held accountable. And hopefully, the $13 billion that they've set aside for the people that were affected, including Butte County, will be enough to go around. Okay, so to answer the question, I believe that the state should not run the utility. I think private enterprise is a better way to do it, but they should be heavily, heavily, heavily regulated. And that's what we should do. I think it should remain a private company held by the stockholders, but the stockholders need to make sure that this company is run in a prudent and effective manner.
Thank you. Ms. Hildebrand.
So, even Adam Smith believed that there should be government control of monopolies, and PG&E is a monopoly. It should be highly regulated. And as a political scientist, where I specialize in public policy, I really hesitate to answer a question that grand because what that does is it forces us to say basically, "What is your ideology?" And I will never make decisions based on ideology. The devil is always in the details. So I will have to figure out what is being proposed and to figure out what is in the best interest of the people of Butte County.
Thank you. Another question from the audience. What first steps do candidates propose since state auditor found Butte County is not prepared to protect vulnerable people here? And this seems to be around the emergency disaster plan. So Sue, you're first.
The question was the very first sentence.
Yeah, what first steps would you, do you propose to prepare vulnerable people in Butte County for the next disaster?
Yeah, so it's a great question. It's an important question, and it's actually why I'm running, and it's why I believe I have the skills to make this happen. The county general plan was basically added date before the fire, and now we can simply throw it in the garbage because it's so far added date. I think what we need to do is a thorough evaluation of what currently exists. I don't think we're at a, I don't think there's a document right now that says this is X, Y, and Z. I think we need to first start with what is still in existence. We need to gather the information, and we need to make a plan. If we don't have a plan, we are not being efficient with our resources, and we're not going to be proactive.
Thank you. Mr. Kimmel Schu?
Well, I have to agree pretty much 100% with Sue on this. I think that obviously, our old plan didn't work real well. I think we owe it to the people of Butte County, especially those that are most vulnerable, to come up with a plan for, to their benefit in case there is another natural disaster. And so I would welcome the opportunity to adjust the general plan, to modify the general plan, or even start somewhere new. I mean, obviously, other counties like Sonoma County are looking at the same thing. Maybe we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can look to other counties, unfortunately, that have had natural disasters as well.
Thank you. I think we'll go back to our media reps.
I'm going to ask a question that Ms. Hildebrand already answered because I know there's quite a bit of difference of opinion between you two. It involves the Butte Regional Conservation Plan. Tell me what you think about it, and I know what the answer is. You're first.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Is this still on? Okay. I am opposed to the Butte Regional Conservation Plan. And here's the reason, is because it affects agriculture in a poor way, okay? The plan says that if you decide to put your land into the conservation program, then you have to do with that land what they tell you. In other words, if I had a piece of rice land and I put it into the Butte Regional Conservation Plan, all I could do is grow rice because rice protects certain species. I believe in the next 40 to 50 years, agriculture will completely change. And maybe that we can grow trees there. Maybe we can grow hemp. Maybe we can grow, maybe we'll have cattle on that property. Who knows what that could be done? I think it inhibits the property rights of the farmer. And that's why the Farm Bureau was opposed to it, and that's why I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. Ms. Hildebrand.
So, you know, I support it. I support it for a lot of reasons. One of the reasons is it streamlines development. We are going to see a lot of development in the next 10 years. We're just going to see it. We need housing, and we need to do it in a way that preserves what makes Butte County so beautiful. What Mr. Kimmel Schu just said was, if a farmer does... The reality of the plan is that it's all voluntary. There's no taking of anything. If you choose to enter into this plan, you've chosen to enter into this plan. There's nothing wrong with that. This plan was created, I think there was 13 public meetings. And every time, the Farm Bureau said, "This is what we'd like to change", and then it got changed. And then another meeting happened, and they said, "This is what we would like to change", and then it got changed, and still the Farm Bureau won't approve of it. And I don't know why. I am a real proponent of, we need a plan that allows quick development while we preserve the natural resources that makes Butte County so beautiful.
Thank you. Your state Public Radio.
Can I just have a quick follow-up?
Yes.
Okay. And Sue's right. It is completely voluntary. Okay, but if you, once you put your land into the conservation program, you may sell it 10, 15 years down the road. That plan remains as a cloud on the title, and the next person who owns that, who may want to do something different with that land, has to abide by that cloud on the title or that easement. And so that's why the Farm Bureau was opposed to it. Again, it restricts what a farmer can do, even though he voluntarily may put it into the program. The next owner has to deal with that same issue.
Ms. Hildebrand.
And the next owner understands the restrictions on the title. And so if the next owner doesn't want to own that with those restrictions, then they don't buy it.
Climate change is something that a lot of people still don't believe is real. As a family farmer, Mr. Kimmel Schu, have you noticed any changes in your lifetime in terms of chill hours, or you're harvesting earlier, different crops or varieties are successful?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry, but we should start with Ms. Hildebrand on this one.
Did I start last time? Okay, go ahead.
I wasn't done with asking my question, but...
Go ahead.
All right.
Sue? That's okay. Yeah? Okay.
Well, all right.
I'll go, since you answered the question, I'll go. Is that okay?
Sure. If this is a worldwide phenomenon, what, if anything, should county government do that would pick up our share of the responsibility for this issue? Or does the size of it, being a global problem, and lack of action elsewhere absolve us of any responsibility?
No, Mark, it's a great question. And agriculture is a science. And scientists say that there is global war. I mean, there's climate change, and I agree with that, okay? Because I believe in science. As far as what we can do of it, do here in the local area, I think agriculture is one of the biggest answers to it. Because agriculture, especially permanent plantings, are just very similar to a rainforest or a forest of any kind. We sequester... can grow trees there. Maybe we can grow hemp. Maybe we can grow, maybe we'll have cattle on that property. Who knows what that could be done? I think it inhibits the property rights of the farmer. And that's why the Farm Bureau was opposed to it and that's why I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. Ms. Hildebrand.
So, you know, I support it. I support it for a lot of reasons. One of the reasons is it streams line, it streamlines development. We are going to see a lot of development in the next 10 years. We're just gonna see it. We need housing and we need to do it in a way that preserves what makes Butte County so beautiful. What Mr. Kimmelschuh just said was if a farmer does, the reality of the plan is that it's all voluntary. There's no taking of anything. If you choose to enter into this plan, you've chosen to enter into this plan. There's nothing wrong with that. This plan was created, I think there was 13 public meetings, and every time the Farm Bureau said, "This is what we'd like to change," and then it got changed. And then another meeting happened and they said, "This is what we would like to change," and then it got changed. And still the Farm Bureau won't approve of it. And I don't know why. I am a real proponent of we need a plan that allows quick development while we preserve the natural resources that makes Butte County so beautiful.
Thank you. Your state public committee?
Can I just have a quick follow-up?
Yes.
Okay. And Sue's right, it is completely voluntary. Okay, but if you, once you put your land into the conservation program, you may sell it 10, 15 years down the road, that plan remains as a cloud on the title and the next person who owns that, who may want to do something different with that land, has to abide by that cloud on the title or that easement. And so that's why the Farm Bureau was opposed to it. Again, it restricts what a farmer can do, even though he voluntarily may put it into the program, the next owner has to deal with that same issue.
Ms. Hildebrand.
And the next owner understands the restrictions on the title. And so if the next owner doesn't want to own that with those restrictions, then they don't buy it.
Climate change is something that a lot of people still don't believe is real. As a family farmer, Mr. Kimmelschuh, have you noticed any changes in your lifetime in terms of chill hours or you're harvesting earlier, different crops or varieties are successful?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. You know?
I'm sorry, but we should start with Ms. Hildebrand on this one.
Did I start last time? Okay, go ahead.
I wasn't done with asking my question, but.
Go ahead.
All right.
Sue?
That's okay.
Yeah?
Okay. Well, all right.
I'll go, since you answered the question, I'll go. Is that okay?
Sure. If this is a worldwide phenomenon, what, if anything, should county government do that would pick up our share of the responsibility for this issue? Or does the size of it, being a global problem and lack of action elsewhere, absolve us of any responsibility?
No, Mark, it's a great question. And agriculture is a science. And scientists say that there is global war. I mean, there's climate change and I agree with that, okay? Because I believe in science. As far as what we can do of it, do here in the local area, I think agriculture is one of the biggest answers to it. Because agriculture, especially permanent plantings, are just very similar to a rainforest or a forest of any kind. We sequester carbon in the wood, woody parts of the trees. Also, we sequester carbon in the soil. Agriculture will play a huge role in making sure the climate change is reversed. And that's what I'm very proud of. Agriculture will play that role. We need to make sure that there are carbon credits for agriculture to do those kinds of things. And so I think it's something that we can reverse. I do believe that. It's like eating an elephant. You take one bite at a time and yes, a small municipality or a small county like Butte should play a role in it.
But what specific steps should be taken?
Well, I think that maybe on the state level, we should get carbon credits to farmers to make sure that they sequester as much carbon as they possibly can. And on the local level, maybe we encourage more solar. I mean, farmers have gone to solar in a big, big way as well. So, you know, there's a lot of answers to a very complex question. We just have to, like Sue says, work collaborative, collaboratively together.
Ms. Hildebrand?
I lost the question.
So if climate change is a worldwide phenomenon, what, if anything, could and should county government do that would help pick up our share of the responsibility for this issue? Or does a lack of action elsewhere, say India, or you're not going to single anybody out, absolve us of any responsibility?
I thought it was a question that had to do with agriculture, but I can.
I know you're not a family farmer.
I live on a farm, as a matter of fact. I do happen to live on a farm just on the, in the unincorporated area between Chico and Durham. And so I was just telling a friend, I showed him the hellebora blooming in the first of the year, so I, which was very unusual. So I'm a firm believer in, you know, every drop in the bucket helps fill the bucket. I'm a real proponent of we all need to do our part. I also am a very, I think there is value in us working together. Are we here in Butte County going to reverse climate change? No. But I think the process of working together is an opportunity for us to figure out what we want to, how we want to remake our communities. I feel like this is an opportunity, as we start to work together, as we start imagining the possibilities, as we start imagining the future, as long as we're working together, we can actually implement that kind of stuff. So I think it's valuable. I think it's valuable that we try to put a drop in the bucket.
Thank you. Here's a question from the audience. By 2030, the senior population is projected to double in the state of California. What is Butte County doing to enhance state programs like in-home services to help prepare for this impending crisis? Susan, you're first.
This is, you know, I prepared for this question and now my answer is gone. So it's a funny, it's a fascinating moment for us in Butte County because it's so hard to pull the strings out of this ball of wax, right? And I think that the aging population is one of those things. If we can keep seniors in their homes, it is cheaper for the taxpayer. The way that seniors stay independent in their homes requires that we have IHSS workers getting paid not only a living wage, but a wage that acknowledges the very difficult work that they do. It actually rewards in a way that dignifies that work. So I think that's one of the most important things that we can do is allow our aging population to do it independently with, I know that's an oxymoron, but with the assistance of a well-paid IHSS workforce.
Thank you. Mr. Kimmelschuh?
Yeah, I would agree with Sue on that as well. I think that if we can keep the elderly people in their homes for as long as we possibly can, under a comfortable situation, and use the United Domestic Workers as assistance to them. I do believe strongly in the United Domestic Workers Program. And I think that is a way of doing it in an economical manner that will help us not to have, build great big facilities at a cost of all the, to the taxpayers essentially. So it is a problem. It is, I don't want to say it's a problem. It's an issue facing our community. And I think, again, it's going to be a collaborative effort on all our parts to make sure that it's done. We should never neglect the elderly.
Thank you. Here's a question from the league. What do you see as the most pressing needs for the residents of District 4? Mr. Kimmelschuh?
Well, you know, Mr. Connolly said previously that his number one issue is public safety. And I agree that public safety is the number one thing that government should provide to their people. Now, a lot of people think government should provide a lot of things, but the number one thing on the national level and on the local level is safety, is public safety. And we all should be safe. You know, I've knocked on almost 5,000 doors throughout the district and that is the number one issue that I come across, is that I even talked to a lady in a small community. She says, "Todd, you know, I just don't even feel safe in my own home." Now, that's a shame when that happens. So I believe in public safety. That's why I'm endorsed by Sheriff Honi. I'm endorsed by the Deputy Sheriff's Association and I, by two former sheriffs, Perry Reniff and Mr. Smith, Sheriff Smith. So I believe in public safety. Public safety will always have my vote and I will make sure that their programs are funded as best we possibly can.
Thank you. Ms. Hildebrand?
So I have to expand the definition of public safety to include mental health. It needs to include economic stability, things like that. Just having broadened the definition, I do want to say that if we think about the most pressing issues of District 4, we have to think about which community we're talking about. If we talk about the Hispanic community in Gridley, they are at the highest unemployment rate in the county. So they have real concerns about employment. If we talk about the Hispanics that live in the labor camp, their number one issue is having access to mental health services. If we talk about the Mung community in Thermalito, they're concerned about speeding in their neighborhoods. There are also, if we talk about other folks that live next to waterways in Thermalito, they're worried about flooding. If we look at the most pressing issues in Chico, it's homelessness and mental illness. So again, District 4 is fascinating because it is so diverse and every single community has a different issue that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Here's a question from the audience. In order to attract manufacturing companies and professional people to Butte County and surrounding areas, how would you work to get our airport working and provide rural broadband?
Sue, you're first.
No, it's you.
Well, let's see. The airport is not in District 4, so that's my, that's my out on that one. I don't know, you know, honestly, I don't know that much about getting the airport functioning again. In terms of broadband, that's working collaboratively with the state.
Thank you. Mr. Kimmelschuh?
Yeah, I think the airport in Chico and also the airport in Oracle, which I do believe might be in the, in the fourth district. Okay, well, near the fourth, near the fourth district, anyway. I think it's very important and the city of Chico is working hard to get passenger service to the city of Chico, to the Chico Airport. And I think that's crucial if we want industry to move here, okay? It's important for those people, executives, whatever, that may be running the business to have easy access to other cities and to travel. So I think that's very important. So airports are important and I think the future looks good for the Chico Airport in Butte County.
Thank you. Here's a question from the league. Would you support making county funds available to clear brush and small trees along all county roads designated as emergency escape routes? And we'll start with you, Mr. Kimmelschuh.
Repeat that again, county funds?
Let's see. Would you support making county funds available to clear brush and small trees along all county roads designated as emergency escape routes?
Well, I think emergency escape routes are extremely important. I think we learned that through the Camp Fire. Unfortunately, the budget, the county level is so very tight. To make a commitment like that is not something I'm willing to do, but I am willing to go to agencies in Sacramento and knock on their door and say, "Hey, we're Butte County. Remember what happened up here? We need your assistance." And so, again, we send plenty of money to Sacramento and I believe we should be getting more of that money back just for these reasons.
Thank you. Ms. Hildebrand?
It sounds like a really good idea. Again, the devil is in the details. Where is that money going to come from? It's easy to, you know, kind of on this campaign journey, it's a lot of fun to talk politics with people that have really great ideas on how everything should run and then we get down to, great, how are you going to pay for it? So I think, I absolutely think the county needs to take responsibility. Public safety, emergency routes is critical for the safety of residents, but it comes down to how are we going to pay for it?
Thank you. Back to our media people. Enterprise worker?
I'm interested in your people's views on how the county is enforcing its marijuana growing regulations. Do you need me to go over that again or were you here when I went through it for the first district? Limiting the size of the grows, enforcing them, violation of the rules by fines, enforcing the fines aren't paid, imposing liens on the property.
Yes, you are.
Okay. And so the question is exactly?
I'm interested in your opinion of that process.
I think it's, I think it's, it's too costly for what the county gets out of it. I think that we need to really evaluate how much money we spend on enforcement versus how much public safety is a result of it. At this point, there is no movement to change current regulations and I, if there were proposals to change those, I don't think that we should move in any direction that's going to cost the county more in enforcement.
Thank you. Mr. Kimmelschuh?
Okay, the answer to this one for me is very easy. I support the existing ordinances on the books. I think it's been tested both through the ballot box and through, through the board of supervisors going back and forth on this issue. I support the existing ordinance as it stands.
Thank you. Did that answer your question?
It does. I'm interested, Mr. Green suggested that maybe we should allow commercial cannabis grows as a way of raising money for the county. I know what you think about that. What do you think about that idea?
Me?
Yeah?
I think it's an idea that is trying to get to ideology. The reality is if we have cannabis grows here in the valley, we wouldn't have cannabis grows in the valley because there would be cross-contamination and there's no way that a cannabis grower would do that. I would have to look at the details. I would have to look at the details. I don't want to make a grand statement because I don't see, I don't see any proposal that is realistic. And I don't want to go into a rabbit hole of hypotheticals that probably will never come to pass.
Thank you. Mr. Kimmelschuh? Did you want to say anything more?
No, nothing more from me.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
California water law is extremely opaque and Byzantine. Now, recently, there's been a proposal to study connecting the Paradise Irrigation District with the California Water Service in Chico. There's also a proposal underway to create one gigantic agricultural water basin. And yet, everything is drawing from the same groundwater. I'm curious, Mr. Kimmelschuh, what do you perceive could be the worst-case scenario evolving from this process? What are the pitfalls that perhaps people don't see?
Well, here's what I think is the worst-case scenario. In 2014, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act was enacted by the state of California during our drought. And it says, "Every county has to come up with a plan to have sustainable groundwater." The Intertie Project, maybe that is a solution to part of the problem. Maybe. We have to study it. I believe in studying it. Maybe the Tuscan Water District is part of the solution. Who knows? We have to study it. It has to go through LAFCO. There's going to be public comment periods at LAFCO. I trust the LAFCO process to go through them. But to answer your question, if we do nothing, if we do nothing and we have a groundwater situation where we cannot sustain it and we do not have a plan in this county, then the state of California will come in and take over and tell us what to do. So it's, the best thing for us is to come up with different plans. Maybe they work, maybe they don't, but we have to look into those. It's important for our county that we look at all different options to make sure we have a sustainable groundwater. So the worst thing that can happen, state of California comes in and says, "We're taking over."
Ms. Hildebrand?
So the worst case, the worst thing that could happen, under what circumstances, again? Put me in context.
With the, if the Intertie Project between Paradise Irrigation District and California Water Service, Chico Division goes through and also the Tuscan District. I don't know if they're, how interrelated the two of them are, but.
That is the question, isn't it? How interrelated are they? So, so I think sigma is, there's, you know, it's a double-edged sword. The groundwater, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, it's a double-edged sword because on the one hand, it requires that there is monitoring of wells on the ground, which on the one hand is a really good thing because it requires that local agencies work together so that we don't, we don't drain the aquifer, basically. On the other hand, if we are monitoring the wells, that's when the state can say, "Oh, you have a lot of water. Let's take that." What I think is the worst-case scenario is that we decide to do things, I don't know if we have the Intertie or if we actually move ahead with the Tuscan Water District without doing the real research about the legality of what's going on and we actually lose our surface water rights. I think that is a tragedy. And if we lose access to the Tuscan aquifer. So I don't think we should ever take any of these water projects lightly without the possibility of losing access to our water.
Thank you. Thank you. Here's a question from the audience. As proponents of public safety, what will you do to enhance relations between minority communities and law enforcement? And we begin with you, Susan.
Oh, gosh. Okay, well, I hadn't prepared for that one. Let's see. I, it's a great question and I really appreciate the question. I have been to, I'm trying to, I hadn't prepared for this. Let me work on this one. One of the things that I was happy to see a few, last summer and a couple times throughout the fall is I was at the NAACP meetings. And I was happy to see the district attorney there, Mike Ramsey was there. I think that's, I think that's one way to start thinking about working on relationships between the police and minority communities is to actually have the police as well as the district attorney, law enforcement, to actually be working within those communities and building local relationships.
Thank you. Mr. Kimmelschuh?
Wow, I think that's a great answer. I don't disagree with Sue on that. I think the more collaboration you can have with minority communities and the police force, the sheriff's department, the district attorney, the better off you're going to be. And of course, that takes time, that takes money, and that's why we have to fund the public safety, the sheriff's department, as much as we possibly can so we can hire more people, more sheriffs to keep everything safe and to correspond and work with those minority groups.
Can I follow up on that? Not that I'm going to respond to you, but can I follow up on that? Because I have a better, not a better answer, but I want to build on that answer.
How can I say no to that?
What's that? Go ahead. Great. Thank you. And you'll like it, I promise you'll like it. Is that, you know, another part of this, as I, as I start really coming to terms with this question, is so, so much about the relationship with minority communities and the police. If we look at the minority communities, they tend to be the most vulnerable communities. Therefore, they are at most risk in terms of coming into contact with police, coming into contact because of, for example, mental health issues, coming into contact because they are living on the streets. So I think in some ways, kind of a roundabout way to deal with that is to really start thinking about how do we provide the social services? How do we use the? How do we use the county? Because, because as what a friend said to me recently is, the cities have the problems, but the counties have the solution in terms of money. What I think we need to be really doing is, is acknowledging that it is the responsibility of the county to focus on the problems that exist in our most vulnerable communities throughout the county.
Thank you. Good to you.
I'm fine.
You're fine?
Yeah, no, it's good.
All right, well, consider that a joint answer. Um, here's a question from the League. Um, there is an initiative that's going to be on the ballot called the School and Communities First Initiative. Um, are you for it or against it, and is there a reason for that?
Is this a, a state, a state initiative?
It's a state.
Okay, I'm not familiar with it. I must, I must be honest with you, so.
Okay.
So I can't tell you if I'm for or against it.
Okay.
So everything that I have been reading about it, I, I think it sounds like a really great idea, and in a nutshell, um, in a nutshell, um, we, um, uh, in a nutshell, what it does is it um, uh, it, it will only impact uh, commercial businesses, the top eight percent of commercial businesses. And what that does is it, it doesn't affect agriculture, it doesn't affect private residents, it doesn't affect small businesses at all. And so I, I think it's a good, um, uh, I need to explore it a little bit more, but what it does is in some ways, it undoes the, the tax restrictions back, from Prop 13 back in 1973, or whatever it was. And those tax restrictions, um, the, the, who suffers from that are the local communities by way of schools and after-school programs and things like that. And so I think it's an opportunity to revisit that and to make the largest corporations in the state of California start paying their fair share.
Thank you.
Can I have a second chance? Okay. You know, I, I didn't know the actual name of it. I, I, I go by it's the, the change in the Prop 13 law, okay? And so thanks for clarifying that, Sue, what it was. You know, we can't always determine what a proposition's about by its, by its title, by its label, so. Um, you know, I, it's, it's a tough one, because we do, if the money really does go to the schools or where it's needed, obviously, all want, we all want that. We want more vocational training, we want more uh, people that learn the trades, and uh, and that's, that's something that I am all in favor of. But um, to just go out and continue to tax people in California time and time again and change the rules, I'm not necessarily for that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I wondered whether, whether our media people would like to have a final pair of questions?
All right. Several years ago, there was a push nationally against fracking. Uh, locally, that actually came to our Board of Supervisors, even there's a lot of oil development locally. Uh, because it was a political issue and we're fairly conservative county, there was a tremendous reluctance, even though the purity of water is paramount to farming. Uh, how the Board of Supervisors, it seems to me, solved this problem, uh, is by prohibiting the disposal of fracking liquid, not prohibiting fracking, uh, which would make it very expensive, I suppose, to frac and then move the water and dispose it somewhere else. Uh, does that go far enough, uh, or is it a bogus concern?
Um, Ms. Hildebrand? Since we went back and forth, it's a little confusing, but I think you should answer first.
Okay. Um, I, it was a very, I don't remember the year, I think it was about 2007. Um, I got a call from somebody who said, holy cow, Supervisor Steve Lambert just brought up this idea of banning fracking in Butte County. And so I called him and said, hey, will you be on my radio program, because I want to ask you about this? And he said, okay, sure. And within 24 hours, when he met me in the studio, he had changed his mind. And I said, have you been lobbied by outside, by outsiders to actually reverse that, your opinion on the ban of fracking? And he said, absolutely. And so the concern for me is that there are outside forces that are always eyeing our county for um, uh, options to frac, for our water, to rebuild our county in ways that we are not directing. Um, so I think we always need to be paying attention to special interests. In terms of fracking in particular, because we have one of the only um, healthy aquifers left, we need to do everything we can to protect the water. The way that we do that is we have to collaborate with the surrounding counties, because the next county over is fracking, and they have the ability to ruin our water.
Thank you. Mr. Kimmelschuh?
Okay, to answer your question, Mark, I believe it was a ballot measure that prohibited fracking in Butte County. It was not the decision of the Board of Supervisors, okay? That, that, and so, um, I um, believe in the will of the voters. And if the will of the voters say there should be no fracking in Butte County, then I honor that. Okay, I do agree with Sue, though, but if we have existing county, or neighboring counties that are fracking, and it could affect our aquifer, that causes me some concern. And, and the actions of, of neighboring counties can have issues on our aquifer, okay? And that's, that's, that's a topic for another time, but I think it's, it's important, and I see Supervisor Lucero on the back, she has always had a view of a regional cooperation between the, the, the region, the whole region, maybe five, six, seven, 10 counties. And I do believe that, because we are in Northern California, and we have a small population, and the only way we're going to be able to work together, I think, is collaboratively. So um, that would be also my message as a Board of Supervisor, to try and work collaboratively with our neighbors, with our cities, and with our neighboring counties.
Thank you very much. I think we have time to have a two-minute closing, if you want to take two minutes. You don't have to, uh, but let's, let's begin, Ms. Hildebrand.
Two minutes?
Thank you.
Give me a microphone, I'd do two minutes. Um, so, um, so the reason I'm running for Butte County Board of Supervisors is because exactly this moment. I got a lot of stuff going on in my, in my world, a lot of fun stuff that I like to do, um, but, but the, but this moment found me. I never aspired to be an elected official, but at this moment, my skills are absolutely needed. So in 2005, when Hurricane Katrina hit New Orleans, I went there, and I was on the ground for six months, and I was doing disaster relief. And I was awe, I was awe-inspired by the outpouring of support of people around the country and around the world to be part of that rebuilding, the recovery rebuilding effort. And while I was there, I also saw the organized, outside, well-funded forces that took that moment of chaos to rebuild uh, New Orleans in a way that suited them, that was not driven by the local, by the local community. Um, and I was on the ground witnessing this. Um, so that was my, that was my, uh, that's my drive here, because every disaster is the same. We are a community in crisis, and we are not organized enough to counter those outside special interests. I know how to do this, it's what I've always done. Um, I do have a background, as I mentioned, I'm a political scientist, I do have a background in public policy, and I have a, and I have a long experience in strategic planning. We need to be organized. Um, I do want to mention that I do have the support of two sitting supervisors, and they are very strong proponents of collaboration with all levels of government, including the adjacent counties, and they are refocusing on prevention. So my background is public policy and long-term strategic planning, which I think is exactly what Butte County needs right now, so that we can fend off those outside forces and move our county in a way where we become better and stronger than we were even before the Camp Fire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kimmelschuh?
Yeah, I think in my opening statement, I talked about service, service to the community, and I really feel strongly about that. I, I, I love Butte County. I think, I, I, I'm sorry if I offend anyone in the room, but I think Butte County's the greatest county in the state of California, okay? All the things we have here are magnificent, and we could go into that list, from regional medical centers, to university, to a community college, to recreational opportunities, to farming, to an abundance of water. I'm running to make sure that this county is saved and is preserved for many, many future generations to go. And so when I decided to run for office, I was overwhelmed at the support that I have been given. And I'm very, very proud that most of that support is a true nonpartisan group of people, okay? Um, it's, it's Democrats, it's Republicans, it's independents, it's Sheriff Honi, it's Maureen Kirk, it's Jane Dolan, it's James Gallagher, it's Jim Nielsen, it's Cal Fire, it's the Deputy Sheriff's Association, it's the mayors of Orville, Biggs, and Gridley. Uh, it gives me, I'm humbled at that support, I'm, I, I'm humbled at the confidence that they have in me to lead. I think, I think the reason I'm getting this is because they know what kind of person I am, they know what kind of leader I am. So um, if elected, I will work as hard as I possibly can to make Butte County a better place, and so I am humbly asking for your vote. And I just listed a couple of my endorsements, but I would, I would ask you to go to www.nutsforTod.com and see over my 800 different endorsements from people all over this, this fine county. So I do want to thank the League of Women Voters again for putting this on, I want to thank my opponent, Sue, for, for having a lively discussion up here as well. And um, I'm just, this has been a fantastic adventure, and uh, I look forward to serving the county. Thank you.
Thank you. You may have a platform for us. Thank you, thank you for coming, uh, thank our candidates, thank you for our media people. Um, as I mentioned, we have a speed dating event for any candidate on that Butte County primary ballot on the first of February in Chico High, so maybe we'll see you all again. Thanks for coming.